All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November fifteenth West Rock Hill Township Supervisors Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag? Okay, thank you all for coming. The first on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. If you have some, please state your name and address. Raise your hand. Seeing none. The next thing I'll move on to is announcements. We will be holding an executive session this evening after tonight's meeting to discuss some personnel matters. And moving forward, consent agenda, the October eighteenth meeting minutes, the win plan review status, Esco release and vouchers, the emergency services report, building and zoning, building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, and Greg, I'll ask you to read the treasury report, please.
Uh, West Rock Hill Treasurers Report for October thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the general fund, one million eighty-seven thousand eighteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Highway aid, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and fifteen cents. Open space, one million two hundred seventy-four thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and four cents. The park fund, fifty thousand four hundred twenty-three ninety-seven. The equipment fund, twenty thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Highway capital, one hundred and thirty-six seventy-six. The street line, thirty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-eight eighty-one. The reserve fund, the general fund reserve, four hundred and seventy thousand seven oh eight ninety-three. The American Rescue Plan Funds, fifty-five thousand five, excuse me, five hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents. The open space, Manderfield, forty-one thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and sixty cents. Sewage maintenance fund, two hundred and three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents. The stormwater fund, twelve thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. The escrow funds, two million four hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-nine.
Any questions for Greg?
I have none.
Okay.
No questions. Uh, one quick thank you for the public works guys who gave me the quick tour of all of the equipment and the files and all the other stuff that we spend money on so that to know them, so I get to know exactly which truck we're talking about or which hydraulics and which repairs.
Okay. Well, I understand a motion for approval. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I just have it. Confirmed department appointments. I see none. Moving on to committee reports, the first on the agenda here is the planning commission report. Mr. Chris Durstein.
Evening.
Good evening.
All right. Uh, planning commission met last night. We had two applicants, first being a lot line adjustment on Lonely Road. Uh, it's a brother's property conveying point nine five acres to the neighboring Romeo property. And I see you're going to present tonight, so I'll be brief. Um, they had a handful of waivers. Uh, we modified them a bit in recommending acceptance of the waivers and recommending preliminary final approval.
Okay.
So that was the first app. Second app was, uh, select properties with their Lawn Avenue subdivision. They brought in a reserve, a revised sketch plan, uh, from back in August, I believe. Um, this is the seventy-three acre tract, uh, between Lawn and, uh, Mountain View. Um, with one parcel on the opposite side of Lawn. That's a three acre tract, uh, posing six lots on that. Um, proposing sixty-three, twelve thousand square foot lots in the, in the main tract, uh, four one acre lots off of Forest and six lots on that three acre, uh, tract I talked about earlier. Um, main tract is in the VR zoning. Uh, lots coming off of Forest are in the RA. That stormwater provided by PRA. Um, the servicing area, uh, is not included in the, uh, RA district, uh, for PRA as well as the, uh, Act five thirty-seven does not continue into the RA. So there are some things they need to do there. Uh, Steve suggested, and we agreed that they get on your agenda, meet with you guys to, uh, talk about possibly modifying the, uh, servicing area and the Act five thirty-seven. So we didn't really want to do too much with this project until we got some more input, uh, on those two issues. Um, moving forward, um, Steve had recommended that the applicant, uh, again, bring this to you guys. So they, they seemed amenable to do that, so hopefully they will be, uh, trying to get on the agenda sometime soon. Um, they're also planning a pumping station on the, on the property, um, which will require special, special exception from the zoning hearing. So that's another, another stumbler for them. Um, open space was another issue. Their original, original plan, uh, showed a layout that was very piecemeal, uh, looked like it was just put together to, to try to scavenge areas to, to, uh, count for their, for their required acreage. Um, they did bring in a little more continuity with the, uh, open space areas, but it was still, still a bit piecemeal, so they're going to try to work on that for us. Um, they also originally had a through-street, uh, connecting the Mountain View, which did not seem appropriate for a handful of reasons. Number one, because Mountain View shouldn't handle the type of traffic that would be coming through that through road. They came back with a cul-de-sac that stops, well, doesn't go all the way out to, uh, close to, uh, Mountain View, but, uh, it's five hundred foot, which falls within our, our, uh, standards, but they have sixteen homes sketched on it, which will require a waiver. They do have a emergency access road from the bulb out to Mountain View Road, which is something we considered, uh, waiving in the past if we had, uh, if we had the access, we would waive number of homes within reason. So we felt more comfortable with that than the, than the through-street. So we'll see, uh, how you guys feel about that. Um, that is basically the, the, the big points on this project for now. There's a handful of other issues, but I don't think we need to get into them tonight.
Okay.
So I just want to give you a quick overview.
Thank you.
And that was all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
I have a quick question. On the, uh, first Romeo, what was the reason for the blot line adjustment?
Um,
convenience?
Now Romeo owns property on the other side of the road that does not connect to his property. Um, this conveyance would allow him to have connection to his other property there and his representation will explain that better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve Chris's report.
Absolutely.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Job well done. Okay. Moving forward, next on the committee reports is the parking rec, Mr. Dave Rice.
All right. Parking rec time. Well, we had a soggy twenty twenty-three. Hopefully it's going to be a sunny twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we did a lot of looking forward and a lot of future, uh, projecting. So, uh, we have attentive dates for, uh, our next fishing derby, which is twenty twenty-four, April thirteenth. So hopefully, uh, we're going to have some good weather. Um, and it's going to be sunshine. We always have September Fest last Sunday in, uh, September, which is September twenty-ninth. We're going to look to have feature film and fire back again. It's just a matter of if we go, uh, early or late, I guess, spring or fall. Depends on what we decide when we have, uh, further discussions. Um, those were some of the highlights. We did, uh, receive an email from, uh, Sherry Hoffman about, um, stepping down in her position because privately and personally she just had, or professionally, she had too much of a time commitment, so she was going to step back and, you know, so we'd like to be able to accept her resignation and have that updated on the website if that would be so desired.
I think we should. You mean a motion to start that? Excuse me. Motion's been made. Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, yeah, basically, um, it was just a mountain of times and when we changed, so it wasn't necessarily a change of the commitment, but you know, that and events, we're trying to look for somebody that can make sure they can attend the events and unfortunately some of her professional timings just didn't work out.
Okay.
So, but other than that, parking rec is actually pretty cool. It's not that. We have a lot of fun events. September Fest, yeah, it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. We have a good time, so. Come on over. Don't be afraid. It's
All the restaurants are donated.
Oh, my God.
Here.
September Fest, uh, we have a ton of sponsors and we have, uh, I mean, we had a great outpouring of sponsors every year. We always do. So we've always, uh, I think it's my one fifteenth or sixteenth year, so we've always had a great turnout and sponsors are always there showing up for us. So it's always good. So come on and join.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Dave. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the parking rec.
I'll move.
I will second. Motion for the maiden second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving forward, commission reports next. The Penriddional Police Commission. Chief Dickinson, how are you? Good, thanks.
October twenty twenty-three activity report for the Penriddional Police Department. Police Department responded seven hundred and forty-four calls for service. Three hundred and twenty-four of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township. Four hundred and nine of them were in West Rock Hill Township, with the remaining eleven calls assisting our neighboring agencies. Uh, the department handled thirty-two traffic crashes in the month of October. Fourteen of them were reportable, eighteen of them were non-reportable, with twenty-three occurring in east and nine according, according, yeah, occurring in west. Officers responded to five part-one crimes and twenty-six part-two crimes, totaling thirty-two crimes for the month of October. Those reported crimes were in East Rock Hill Township. Four drug complaints, three hit-and-run crashes, two thefts, two fraud reports, one charge of recklessly endangering another person, one public drunk, one motor vehicle theft, one ordinance violation, and one loitering complaint. West Rock Hill Township reported crimes, four crimes of criminal mischief, two crimes of theft, uh, two crimes of trespassing, two crimes of harassment, one decent, indecent exposure, one DUI, one charged drug complaint, another hit-and-run crash, and a public drunk. Our criminal charges for, filed for the month of October, uh, eight charges possession of drugs, seven charges of possession of paraphernalia, drug paraphernalia, one theft of property arrest, one receiving stolen property charge, two charges of discharging a firearm into a structure, two charges of recklessly endangering another person, three charges of disorderly conduct, three charges of criminal mischief, one arrest for public drunk, seven charges of DUI, and one charge of harassment. Other police activities for the month of October, officers conducted a hundred and ninety-one traffic enforcement details, issued thirty-six traffic citations, issued sixty-one traffic warnings, conducted twenty-two school checks, a hundred and thirteen park checks, two foot patrols, and the officers attended two hundred and sixty-eight hours of training or participated in that training. So year to date, we've responded to seven thousand four hundred and thirty-four, I'm sorry, seven thousand four hundred and thirty calls for service, two hundred and thirty traffic accidents, reported a three hundred and seventy-two offenses, filed three hundred and forty-seven criminal charges, and our officers have attended or participated in two thousand two hundred and seventy hours of training. That would be the activity report for October twenty twenty-three. Just a reminder that next week, beginning on Monday, we will be doing construction in the lobby of the police department. So the lobby will be closed until the following week, but if you come out, you pick up the phone, someone will come out and meet with you. So no changes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
No questions, no comments.
Entertain a motion for approval.
Questions? I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
A good night. Okay. Moving forward, next on the commission reports is the Joint Recreation Authority, Mr. Hal Shermer.
First one, I'm looking at the microphone. Uh, Joint Recreation Authority met on the first Wednesday. Uh, the pool is now closed up. It has been drained. The lines have been blown out. The diving board has been stowed and all the interior work have, or all the interiors have been cleaned up and we now have a couple of big, essentially big wood barn doors to close off the men's room and the ladies' room in order to keep out squirrels, leaves, and anybody else who feels like coming by. Biggest thing we had is the, uh, we did have a bit of outreach. We have a couple of volunteers from East Rock Hill and West Rock Hill and also in Salzow Borough who were uh, willing to come and help get the word out that yes, we have a pool. Yes, we're looking for volunteers. So we have to ask, I have to thank, uh, Ms. Keating and Don Krauth Hamel and Tony Buck, Lynn Saylor, Roseanne Davis, who actually came out on election day and realized that, well, if people are coming to one place at the polls, I can be much more effective rather than me going out, walking the streets and knocking on doors. We can hand out information, let people know that we have Holiday House Pool. We are looking at approximately a ten percent increase in the pricing for memberships this year, which is about what, uh, Percacy Borough is looking to have, about what Southerton Borough is looking to have in order to keep up and be competitive. Uh, so we've had a lot of people helping out. Uh, so I do also want to thank Mr. Miller who helped hand out, uh, just, you have postcards, which we made a bunch of copies of, just reminding people, we've got a pool. We are looking for people. We're looking for members. We're looking for volunteers. Uh, so as of right now, we are, the pool is closed down. We are working on contacting anybody who moves into the area within about a ten-minute drive. Uh, I have access to the real estate database. So anybody who moves in, we're pulling together a database of, okay, these are the people who've moved in, new hires, new, you know, new residents, new rentals. We want to reach out to them, see if we can get them interested. And we are working on, in addition to currently, if you're in Salzow Borough, if you're a taxpayer for Salzow Borough or a taxpayer for, a residential taxpayer for West Rock Hill Township or Salzow Borough, uh, you get a discount when you go to Holiday House Pool. We're also working on extending that to the members of a business, which is a taxpayer in West Rock Hill or Salzow Borough, uh, trying to get to the, uh, everybody who's employed up on Hospital Hill and everybody who's employed down in Salzow Borough. Uh, that's it.
All right. Any questions?
I have one question. What, whatever happened to the feasibility study? Talked about months ago.
Uh, feasibility study was a a favor to one of the former board members from one of the engineering firms. Uh, when that member quit, we no longer have the free feasibility study, so we're looking into getting funding for a feasibility study and we're actually going to be busting our head, tossing our hat in the ring with the same grant that everybody else in the five boroughs and townships are all looking for. Uh, for getting grant money from D C E D. Hopefully we might also get some from, uh, Bucks County Planning. So we're hoping that we don't have to pay for it. If we have to, we have to, but we'd rather not. And we still have the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven planning, uh, update. So we have a study that was done about ten years ago, which is pretty much still a situation we're in because we'd never got to implement any of those updates and those plans. So we are looking at that. And we are looking at the plans that we had from eighty-six and the plans we had from seventy-six to try to avoid replanning the same plan that we have in a book someplace else. So we've got a bunch of plans. And most of them have come up with the same idea, try to get better integrated in the community, put a walking path over out onto Holiday House Road, connect over to the open space on the back portion of, uh, Saint Luke's. Uh, once upon a time, there was a plan for an actual, you know, sports complex down there along with a baseball field in the lower section of the field at Holiday House, uh, find a way of better integrating with the activities, which we are reaching out to because we're going to, looking at now having some activities. We have an open area where the handball court used to be, which was a bit of a police nuisance because you couldn't see behind the wall, uh, which ended up having six packs and everybody else misbehaving. So we have that area open now and available for use for, uh, day camps. We also have lower field available for day camps and we're also looking at the top or the area, which is within the fenced-in section of the four tennis carts, tennis courts also for day camp. So we got three different, uh, sectioned off areas which are available if anybody wants to use them.
So you will, you will let us know when you
Yep.
Have an idea of funding.
Yes, I will let, as soon
The study could be taking place.
Yeah, as soon as I get, as soon as I get some money in, I will let you know.
Okay.
I will be out yelling, shouting and
Fair enough.
Quite happy.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My motion. Okay. Motion's been made to accept the, uh, joint rec, the authority. I'll second the motion. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have seen. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the tax collector's report. Suzanne Clark is not here. I do not see her.
Yeah, Suzanne texted me since she won't be able to make it tonight. The, uh, October two, two thousand twenty-three tax collectors' report, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars was collected.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented by Mr. Lippincott.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving forward, next on the agenda is the engineer's report. Mr. Steve Allen.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item on the agenda is the Romeo plot line adjustment plan. On Lonely Road, we have a representative from the design engineer here. Can you give a little overview of the project?
Um, so, uh, my name's Ricky Branko. I'm from All County and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the, uh, property owner at two one five Lonely Road. Um, project just seeks to, uh, transfer, uh, like a small triangle over in the corner there, uh, from two forty-four Augustine Road over to two one five Lonely Road.
Any questions?
No.
Well, I'm familiar with the area.
Yep.
And I, and I
I walk the property.
Understand why he's doing it. He wants to connect these two pieces of property.
Correct.
Okay. So if you're comfortable with the plan in our review letter, uh, you would just need to authorize the solicitor to prepare a resolution for action effects.
Okay. Do you want to hear some?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Collingwood's making the motion?
I will second.
Just Shermer second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
Um, you're waiving curbs, sidewalks, and road lights, right?
Yes.
And then there's no fee and
There's no fee because there's no new building.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. And, and will there be dedication to the ultimate right or what?
There will be dedication on Lonely Road. I'll provide you an updated memo.
I, I think that's all I would ask. Or you think
Well, there would, there would, they provided a revised plan since I wrote my letter. So some of the engineering things I've already dropped out. Please clean that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is PennDOT's new traffic signal application process and resolution. So as I understand it, every time we do any modification to a traffic signal, we need PennDOT's approval. PennDOT always requires you to sign what they call a T E one sixty. It's their application form. And then you have to also, with that T E one sixty, confirm that you have proper maintenance of the lights and you have a maintenance contract, which we do through Signal Services, I believe. Uh, they're changing their procedures now so that you won't have to do that every time. They want you to sign a master signal maintenance agreement with the state. So you can submit that one time. It'll be on record. You don't have to do that every time. So they have a standard form, uh, that they provided. It just sort of codifies what they have been doing for years. All traffic signals are owned by the township. All maintenance is a responsibility of the township. If the township doesn't maintain it properly, PennDOT has reserves the right to come in, maintain it for you, and backcharge your liquid fuels funds. That, that's how they would recover. Uh, and then a bunch of other, uh, same.
See, does maintenance include adjusting the timing? I mean, if they, if we're going to sign an agreement saying that all maintenance is our responsibility, not just the informal arrangement that we've had in the past, does that give the township the right to adjust timing as it sees fit?
Yeah. Every, it's, you still need PennDOT approval for everything you do to a traffic light. You just won't have to reconfirm your maintenance agreement every time that you make an application. It's a limited benefit that they're giving us.
Very limited.
Yes.
You pay, we tell you what to do.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So this has come to light because of the, um, license plate reader, uh, program that the chief is working on. We have to update every traffic signal permit for the license plate readers, and they won't do that unless you sign the master maintenance agreement. So we'd be looking for authorization or, uh, I guess the manager's signing the agreement.
We have what, six and a half? Do we split? Do we split on the light at Naysville with Seltzerd or?
We own that.
Okay, we own that one. Okay.
Sold it.
It falls on our side. Okay.
All right. So you need a motion?
Yes, please.
To get authorization. I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Motion's been made and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Last item I have heard for back to Old Bethel Pike Sewer service area study we were working on, that was the potential extension of sewer facilities from, uh, the select properties development north. It's approximately fifteen hundred feet of plus table road, the little private road off to the side of West Rock.
The other, other select properties.
Right, right. Not the select properties in West Rock Hill, the select properties, Park Hill Estates and East Rock. Uh, so East Rock Hill did the same process for the properties on their side of the street. East Rock Hill also entered into a joint conveyance agreement with Percacy Regional Authority, which would allow Percacy to serve the customers on West Rock Hill side and convey the sewage through the East Rock Hill system. But we have a way, because Percacy does not have a line that could accommodate houses in, in West Rock Hill on but we've resolved that problem. Uh, so to submit this, to PennDOT, to get the revision for our five thirty-seven plan, we have to adopt the resolution that was in your packet of saying that, you know, you're agreeing to that study, to that limited study area to add that to our five thirty-seven plan, submitting a packet to D E P for approval. East Rock Hill Township has already, last month, adopted the same resolution for the properties on their sites. I'd be asking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Any costs involved in this, Steve?
Uh, we wrote this up as we did not commit to a timeframe to build it. Uh, we said we were going to seek grant funding to build it over the next five years.
Okay.
And Percacy Regional Authority was in general agreement with that either. They didn't have budgeted funds for, for the project.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve or can we, can I entertain a motion for authorization?
I thought we had some backing from, I think it was San Tesario and some of the other guys in Harrisburg did have had been, there was some money coming up from D E P for this sort of project. Hopefully we'll get some grants for it. Because I know that that's been bang, been bouncing around a little bit in Harrisburg.
Okay.
But when, when we find out that there's funds available, we could apply for them. But we have to get the planning approval from D E P before we can
Can you tell me the resolution number?
The first one was, uh, twenty-three twenty.
That was for this graphic signal, right?
It was for the traffic. The next one's twenty-three twenty.
Three twenty-one. Okay.
Sure.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Shermer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collingwood. All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have for now. Unless there's
I have no questions.
No questions.
Okay. All right. I will make a motion that we approve the engineer's report.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the solicitor's report. Mary Everly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you.
Drop the mic.
All right. Moving forward. Manager's report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is a D C E D grant application. Uh, the first grant application that's in your
Uh, the first grant application that's in your package is for. Yep. To do. To do a eight hundred thousand dollar, uh, grant application for Old Mill Road. Curb, side curb, uh, stormwater and repaving and fixing the. Bad areas.
Yeah, it generally would extend from. The Wilcox driveway. I call it north, north.
It is.
Forest.
That's north, yep. Which is the bad part.
That, that, that would be widening on one side of the street.
Yep.
Uh. The Wilcox side. By, oh, five feet plus minus five feet of widen.
Okay.
Generation. And restore the road. As Mr. Lippincott said, it, it. Total estimated cost of the project, including. Tendencies, engineering and administrative costs, which are allowed in the grant. Uh, the eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars, seventy-five percent. Uh, we often recommend. That the township offer a match. Uh, matching funds to improve the scoring of the grant when it's going through the process. This particular brand, grant this year does not mandate matching fund. But we still suggest that if the township has the ability to offer funds. That could. You know, better score your application. In this case, you know, we've often, often recommended 10% funds that would be. Ninety thousand dollars.
Any concern?
I agree with that, no.
You're good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, uh, sounds about par. Okay.
Okay, so if you want to proceed with this, you would have to, uh. Make a motion to authorize the manager to sign the grant application. And, uh. We could finalize the grant.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Shermer made the motion. Mr. Collingwood second.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we get it right.
All those signify by saying aye. Aye, we're going to get it right.
And you also have to approve the resolution that allows me to do.
And the resolution will be twenty-three twenty-two?
Twenty-two, correct.
Twenty-three twenty-two. Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution. Twenty-three twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second with 10% awareness.
All right, motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
The next item is there's another resolution for the D C B B grant. We were approached by Grandview Hospital. Only municipalities, authorities. Police commissions, uh, local government bodies can apply for this grant. However, um, other people can apply. Grandview Hospital asked us to apply. They will do all the work. They will pay the funds. However, the township has to sign. For a million dollar grant. Um, to redo their old lot. So I would need, uh, a motion from the Board of Supervisors authorizing me to sign the grant and approve the resolution.
I'd be happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made second. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Again, a resolution, right?
That's twenty twenty-three. Three, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-three. Thank you, Hal. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-three twenty-three. Right here, second. Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item in your list is authorization to go out for the twenty twenty-four pipe, uh, bid, but we put that out yearly. Um, list of pipes to be replaced is that Old Mill and Three Mile. Run Creek, Green Top at Burger and Catch Basin, Camp Rock Hill near, uh, house number three seventy-one. Lower Rocky Dale, two pipes near seventeen eighty, Olive A House. Uh, Tower near two fifteen, Thousand Acre near eight oh four. And possibly Augustine Road Pipes because that's kind of on our planning for twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Good. Sounds good. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for that. I will move. Motion's been made, second, second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I just have it.
The next item on the list, um. Between various. Um. Discussions that I've had with Park and Rec members and board members, there has been discussion about an electronic sign. Maybe the township giving an electronic sign. Um, what we're seeking the administrative staff is for the Board of Supervisors to authorize the solicitor to draft a model ordinance. Or to the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. See if you're. Okay with that.
I'm fine with it. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for that. To authorize township solicitor to draft an ordinance.
Absolutely. Yes. Make the motion. We need it.
Mr. Collingwood made the motion. You're second. Okay. Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. This is way past due. Thank you very much.
Last item is the board needs to authorize the advertisement for the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, the twenty twenty-four budget has to be on public display for thirty days and then the board would then adopt it. At December.
Okay.
Um, some of the highlights, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars be allocated for road repair. In two thousand twenty-three, it was four hundred and ninety-eight thousand. All the house budget is thirteen thousand. Um, there is a new backhoe budgeted for a hundred and seventy thousand. What we'll be doing there is what we've done before. We've borrowed from the reserve and paid it back. Last time we bought, uh, bought a ten wheeler. And we've paid that completely back. And, uh, as always, the Penrith Senior Center is twenty-five hundred dollars. That's the highlights and no tax increase.
Any questions, concerns, Mr. Collingwood?
We're borrowing from ourselves for the.
Yes.
Yes, we're borrowing for ourselves for the backhoe.
No questions.
All right, right here, uh, motion to advertise this budget.
I will move to advertise this budget.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it.
That's all I have.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for approval of the manager's report.
So move.
Collingwood made the motion.
Second.
Shermer, second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I just have it. Thank you. All right, moving forward, old business. One thing on old business I'd like to bring up. Um, it's the, uh, request for the planning commission to go forward on. Uh, moving, or the, uh. Penrith's a plan, right? They, they were asked to do this. I think that we should start. The work on doing that. So whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think Mr. Miller spoke about this at the last meeting.
He did.
Right. I think it's a good idea as well.
Yeah, there was three issues. There was, um. Short-term rentals in law suites. And the village planning as far as the improvements go, not on density. That was the last request, correct? Yeah.
So we should. Steve, do you have any, do you have any, um? Concerns or any comments?
Not, not tonight.
Okay.
I have to work with planning commission. Through the issue.
Okay. All right, so we're going to get started on work. Uh, I'm. You comfortable with it, Mr. Sherman?
Yeah. Uh. I know it came up. Me and the other seven people who watched the planning commission on YouTube all saw if this was a big discussion last night, so. No, it's about, it's a. Time to move that forward. You guys had a lot of good ideas. And time to get the discussion going.
Okay.
Does our solicitor have anything to say?
No.
You're mic'd up, so.
No, I, I was just being ready. Okay.
That's fine.
In your spare time.
Well, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any old business?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Moving forward to new business. Any new business?
I don't have any. I already thanked the people who volunteered for Holiday House. That's all I needed to do. I have none.
All right, moving forward then, public comment? Anybody have any public comment? Mr. Shermer.
Union Strangler. Dernish Road. This past election day, I worked inside the Argus Pole all day long. I never got to get, go outside during the day. But I did hear from voters about the police badge worn by Jay Kaiser outside the pole. It led some to wonder if he was with our police force or was being endorsed by our police force. I found out later that the police do not endorse anyone, and of course I knew Jay was not a member of the police force. We should be able to demand more of our elected officials who should be setting an example of a higher standard of behavior. Not stooping to waste to do voters. It also makes me wonder if we can keep any other promises, if he can keep any other promises he made. It is my hope that we can expect some type of integrity from our officials going forward.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Mr. White.
Oh, wait. So it's my understanding that the. Funding for our fire departments has been flat for years. It has not increased. I think that's, uh. That's true. That's kind of outrageous and we need to reconsider that. Fire departments need the money as much as you guys need the money. And we need to fund these people. They're volunteers and they're trying to. Protect our community as much as anybody else is. Um, so that, that's all I have to say about that. The other question or comment I have is, uh, so I was told that the. Vehicles and campers in the campground. Do not have to abide by any setbacks. Because the court ruled them as temporary vehicles and they don't have to, uh, abide by any setbacks. So I guess that applies to everybody then. We don't, nobody has to, if it's a temporary vehicle or a wheeled vehicle that can be moved. We can put it anywhere on our property. It's not. There's no regulation to it. Um. I know we're allowed to have two, but you know. Uh, I'm curious as we're, if we're just allowed to have them anywhere.
Don, I'm, I'm not going to answer that question because I would like to both look at the court decision that you're referring to. And the zoning ordinance before. Obviously, before I answer that.
He's making a public comment, by the way.
I know, I know, but I was.
Proceed forward.
Yes, and I'm aware that the zoning ordinance does have some. Uh, wording in there that you can't park a camper in your front yard, which I think is, well, it goes in the next comment. So this last election cycle was, was pretty stunning cycle. I think the people spoke out extremely loudly. That, uh, they're kind of tired of and don't want to deal with. Social government, socialist government interventions in their lives. I think, you know, we, we go from the school boards to the county. The state, the whole way up through it, everybody has said pretty much the same thing, you know, we're, we're tired of it. We don't want it. We want to go away. So, I mean. My comment to the school board and to the. Planning commission would be, you know, maybe it's time to consider pulling back on some of our onerous socialist. Zoning regulations. I think they're out of line.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I did, it occurs to me that I do have one thing which actually adds into what Don said. Uh. As public comment, simply that, uh, and I forgot to mention this, uh, for anybody who actually is a volunteer for firefighters or EMS. Bucks County now has ordinance one seventy-two. Coming up next year, volunteer firefighters will be, will be eligible. For up to one thousand dollars off of their real estate taxes. Because if you work for a volunteer fire company or volunteer EMS, Bucks County will rebate up to a thousand dollars of your taxes. So pray for.
Thank you.
Definitely for the firefighter. They still need the fund for their.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, it's.
You know, you just reminded me that I forgot to talk, I forgot to mention that, that, okay, hey, here's a way of, if you work for fire EMS, this is a way of saying thank you for everybody.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion for Germa into executive session.
I will move.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming. Yes.